I'd like to welcome council members, city officials, our whole audience. I'd like to welcome you to the February 27th City Council meeting. From only having actually nothing on the agenda last week, we've got 10 items on our agenda this week. So we will have a busy evening. At this time, if you would, Mr. Fawcett, would you please continue with the roll call of members?
Clay.
Yes.
Corcoran.
Florima.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Kearney.
You.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Tatman.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. If everybody would, would you please hand your first reading?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the previous meeting have been distributed for review. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes by Mrs. Neal, seconded by Mr. Cole? Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And the minutes from the previous meeting have been accepted. At this time, we have reports from our committees. Yes, Mr. Cole?
The Finance Committee and Technology Committee have six total on tonight's 10. So I even had more sent to the Law Director so that he could give us something to do next week as well, next meeting. But item number one is at first reading. This is to appropriate $21,172.04 to cover brought forward and carry forward monies that were excluded from the 2016 appropriations to the 2017 budget. This was something that we had talked about, the necessity for during our committee meeting last week. And so that this can be corrected, we will ask respectfully that we waive the three-read rule when the time comes. Item number two is also for finance, and it is authorizing the appropriation of funds from the safety levy to general fund on an ongoing monthly-as-needed basis to prevent the monthly negative cash balances within the general fund. And we'll let that go another reading. Item number three, which is to appropriate $38,500 in additional funds to the Parks and Recreation Department for various accounts which were not included for the 2017 budget. And so that we can make use of this money, I will ask at the appropriate time that we please waive the three-read rule. Item number four, which is at first reading, and is to authorize the city to pay $10,000 to the public entities Risk Services of Ohio, representing the deductible for an insurance claim for the city. And seeing as this is an insurance claim, and we would like it paid, and I'm sure the people involved would like it paid immediately, I will ask at the appropriate time that we do waive the three-read rule in that instance for item four. Item number five, appropriating the upgrade of the telephone and internet services for numerous city offices, and appropriate $19,226.40 for that upgrade. That is, we're going to, we're still working on our quotes, so I'm going to ask that we do not move on this, this particular meeting. And item number 10, which is at first reading, which is to authorize the mayor to contract with Water Age Drain Company to update the codified ordinances and prepare up to 40 sets of replacement pages, and to update the codified ordinances on the cities, of the City of Chillicothe on the internet. We are going to reduce that number from 40 to a lower number, so we will not ask to read this, we'll read it, but we will not take action on it tonight, because it will be updated with a lower number and out of savings at our next meeting. And that concludes my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any other committee reports? Yes, Mr. Florima.
Thank you, President Arnold. Safety Services have three items to come together for this evening. Item number six is to authorize the city to participate in the Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchase Program, RoadSalt. It's an annual, it's time to use economies, join in for a bid, and for that reason, it's time-sensitive, I'll be asking of the consideration of waiving the three-read rule. And number seven is to accept and appropriate $10,560 received from the Ohio AG for use towards mandated continuing education and training of police officers. This is a simple acceptance of money that's granted, since it's time-sensitive, I will also ask for the waiving the three-read rule. And number eight is accepting up to $50,000 in grant funds from the Ohio Department of Development for use of the, by the Chillicothe Fire Department for study of emergency dispatch operations in the city of Ross County. Authorize the appropriate city official to accept said grant, and authorize Safety Service Director to contact with, to contract with a private consulting firm to conduct the emergency dispatching study. These funds, up to $50,000, will be available as soon as we proceed with this. And because this is of a time-sensitive nature, this will also be asked for consideration to waive the three-read rule. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Florima. Anybody else have a committee report? Yes, Mr. Tatman.
Thank you, President Arnold. Such a pleasure, I guess I'll take it. Executive Committee, we met on this, number nine, the traffic light intersection of Hickory and Eighth Street, which, by the way, is already down, but it's going to remain permanently down if we get this through. I have no action on it right now. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tatman. Any other committee reports this evening? Yes, Mr. Clay?
City Services has not had anything on the agenda tonight, however, we have had our initial meeting to discuss the strategic facilities plan for the city. There are a number of items that we discussed at that last meeting, including some that were considered to be of a more urgent nature. So to that end, once we've completed legislation tonight, I am going to ask that we go into executive session.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cole.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And Ms. Patrick?
Utilities Committee has nothing on tonight's agenda, however, I did pass out two papers to council members. The one states the date of August 9th on the Board of Elections, where that's the final date of the filing, put the issue before the public about voting on council terms, if that's the way we decide to go. And the other one was a summary and recommendation about the 2017 water rates. And as soon as I get committee assignment on the second item, I will schedule a meeting to talk about both of these. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other reports in the committees this evening? Not seen any. We move on to reports from our officials and our mayor, who just gave a very good state of the city address here earlier. You're first.
Thank you, President Arnold. I'll keep my remarks short, having had that opportunity earlier this evening. I'd like to speak in support of all the items that were introduced for waiver-first read tonight. I feel like we say this often, but they are all, in fact, housekeeping items, as I view them, will help with efficient payment of claims and that sort of thing. So again, in support of those items. On the item number nine, I know that this was mentioned at, I believe it was mentioned in the committee meeting, but just so that everybody understands, the codified ordinances of the city allow the Safety Service Director to temporarily adjust stop signs or lights if necessary. So as Councilman Tatman mentioned, the lights are already down, we've been in communications with Glad Belter, and that's something that they're in support of. I believe we can modify those traffic signals for up to 90 days before council action, but in the meantime, there are stop signs and lights. And then I wanted to quickly thank the Law Director, who's not here tonight, for some quick action. Earlier this week, well, I guess it was last week, because today's Monday, we received a notice from the Common Police Court about a property that had gone up to auction for failure to pay taxes two consecutive times, and was not purchased at auction. Under Ohio law, certain entities, cities, counties, school districts, have the opportunity to petition for that property if it is not claimed at auction. With our recent conversations about, obviously, the land bank, the CIC's ability to do things with property, I gave the Law Director's Office a call. There's only 10 days to respond, and although the Law Director's Office has never dealt with a problem like this before, they quickly filed a petition, and to our knowledge, were the only ones that have gotten involved. It's just an empty lot between two houses, but it's the type of thing that the land bank was designed to facilitate, and so it was just great collaboration within the city, should be great collaboration with the land bank. So I'm appreciative of those efforts. And then just, just from the State of the City earlier tonight, I'm appreciative of everybody that came to watch. I'd like to recognize some of the student council members from Chillicothe High School who came to the State of the City and have stuck around to see government in action. I had the opportunity to be at the high school last week, and I can assure you that all four of the students here tonight are very impressive. And I, the text from, from the State of the City will be posted online, and you know, one of the things that I, I mentioned during the State of the City that I'm excited about, and I think is one of our next big projects, is the proposal for bringing back curbside recycling. I think we'll have an active public conversation. It's probably the topic that I get, you know, the most requests and calls about in terms of the service we can add, so I'm looking forward to that lively conversation. With that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you, Ms. Penny. And now our auditor, Ms. Crystal Spatnagle.
I just want to show support to waive the three-read rule on item one and three. Both of those items were left off of the budget. Item number one was carry-forward monies. They do have POs that need to be paid, so that's important that gets, that gets completed today. The second item I want to talk about is Agenda Number Two, that is to appropriate funds to the safety levy, from, to, from the safety levy to the general fund. And what will happen there, the safety levy and the general fund are two separate funds, but we consolidate them. Usually the consolidation takes part at the end of the year, so at times, the general fund, what I should tell you first of all, the safety levy increases in all the revenue, but the expenses for that money actually come out of the general fund, so at times the general fund can go into a negative fund balance. So to bring that from happening, we want to do a transfer as needed from the safety levy to the general fund. That concludes my report.
Thank you. That, I guess, comes back around then to me. I don't really per se have to report this evening. Earlier this evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Penny, gave the State of the City address. Actually, it was a very, very good, not only speech, but it was very nice to hear that our city's doing as well as it is, and I'm very, I'm very proud of our city and the things that we've done as well. And for those of you that did take the time to come down here to see it in person, they had some great snacks here afterwards, and the mayor's secretary Kathy put those together and did a fantastic job, so I'll give you a kind of shout-out for that. One thing I would like to mention, and Ms. Patrick mentioned a little bit ago about times to be on the ballot, and she and I have talked about this, I've already called her about this. I called about a week ago or so to the Board of Elections to find out, you know, we've been to have a discussion coming up to whether or not we should change our terms from two years to four. We're not trying necessarily to do it for longevity as much as consistency. And for still having a changeover of council members, stagger half the council to the other half, and also stagger the mayor's election time with my position to be on staggered two-year terms, so there still is an influx of some new blood coming into council on a regular basis, or not, depending on reelections. I did find out, because I know once before when we discussed this several years ago, it was going to be a huge cost for the city to get it on the ballot. Since it's already election being held this fall, and the city is already paying money to have, have us on the ballot, which they have to do every, have to do to, for our, our election as officials, there is no additional cost to put that item on the ballot, because it's, we're already paying per precinct to be in all the precincts. So just so everybody knows, the issue, this time I found out the issue to be on the ballot, will cost us no more additional funds than what it's costing us to sponsor the election for our election. So just so you know, there's no cost there. And when that gets, delving into the discussion on that, she, she'll probably have further details on that. So I did want to tell everybody that. And other than that, I really have nothing more to add. Moving on to audience participation. I don't have anybody on the sign-in sheet, but if anybody would like to speak, feel free to come forward to the microphone, we do need your name and your address. And you have five minutes to make a presentation. When you get close to the end of five minutes, I'll indicate that you're getting close, so you can wrap up. Anybody want to say anything this evening? Okay, not seeing such. Move on to old business. Does anybody have any old business this evening? Any like to bring up? Not seen anything. We'll move on to petitions and correspondence received by the clerk. Mr. Fawcett?
President Arnold, I just have one item to report on. I received a letter from Rod Sittens, the Chief Development Officer of Frontier Community Services. This is in reference to the Point Senior Village. There's a planned development, a residential rental development that is located within a one-half mile radius of the City of Chillicothe. The proposal is to construct 50 units of affordable housing for seniors, 55 years and older. Nice description of them in the letter I distributed. The location of the project is at 2499 Anderson Station Road, and the letter contains information concerning the right of council to submit comments to the agency or objection, and these must be submitted within 30 days of the notice. That's all I have, President Arnold.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. Moving on, do we have any new business this evening? Yes, Mr. Florima? I'm sorry, I saw your hand. Thank you, President Arnold. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Council President Corcoran. I have a motion to excuse Council President Corcoran, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And we have excused Mrs. Corcoran this evening. Any other new business for this evening? Not seen any. We move on to assignments and meetings. I don't have any meeting dates unless anybody has any coming up that they'd like to announce right now. Assignments, we've been busy this last two, two weeks. I've got 13 assignments that have been brought up. I'll try to read through them as quick as I can. Finance, a request for legislation to appropriate funds to, and some of these are on tonight, by the way, to purchase a video projector, projector for council chambers, from funds moved from council office supplies to capital purchases. City Services, a request for legislation authorizing the City of Chillicothe to participate in the State of Ohio Salt Bill. Parks and Rec, request for legislation granting use of the city park and surrounding streets for the annual feast of the Flower Moon. To Development, a request for legislation to accept and appropriate $5,396 received from Title I agency as a payoff of a chip mortgage. Finance, request for legislation to oppose a section of the Ohio Governor's proposed 2017 and 18 budget that centralizes collection of net profit tax returns and other provisions. Finance, request for legislation to appropriate $200 to the Parks and Recreation Capital Fund to cover income tax collection fees. To Finance, request for legislation to appropriate $6,400 to the Refuge Collection Refund Account to pay refunds due. To Park and Rec, a request for legislation to support the 100-year anniversary of Camp Sherman, and to form a committee and a program to support the event. Assignment to City Services, adding Beth Neal as a co-chairman with her interest and also her tie-in with the Development Committee that she's on, since this does involve both economic development for both the city and commercial. Anyway, request for legislation for the establishment of a curbside recycling program. Safety Services, request for legislation to accept and appropriate the local government fund grant up to $50,000 for a study of the emergency dispatch operations in the city and county. To Finance, request for legislation to appropriate $10,000 to pay the deductible for an insurance claim for the city. To Finance, a request for legislation to accept and appropriate $3,795 received for two insurance claims for damages to city property from traffic accidents. And to Development and Park and Recreation, this is going to be a combined assignment, because it does involve both of them very heavily, request for legislation to review and update necessary changes to transient business, peddler, and solicitor fender's license, to include but not limited to food trucks. And that is the assignments that we've had for the last week. And now we will move on to our current legislation, whenever you're ready, Mr. Fawcett.
Item one is first reading of an ordinance appropriating $21,172.04 to cover brought-forward and carry-forward monies that were excluded in the 2016 appropriations to the 2017 budget and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Cole?
At this time, I would like to request that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Patrick. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And item number one has passed. Item number two, first reading of an ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds from safety level levy to general fund on an ongoing monthly-as-needed basis to prevent monthly negative cash balances within the general fund and declaring emergency. First reading. Item number three, please.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating additional funds in the amount of $38,500 to the Parks and Recreation Department for various accounts which were not accounted for in the 2017 budget and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Cole?
At this time, I'd like to ask that we please waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
We've waived the three-read rule. Roll call on that ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the City of Chillicothe to pay $10,000 to the public entity Risk Services of Ohio, representing the deductible for an insurance claim for the city and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Cole?
At this time, I'd like to please ask that we waive the three-read rule.
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Kearney. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And we have waived the three-read rule. Roll call on the ordinance, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number five, please.
First reading of an ordinance approving the upgrade of telephone and internet services for numerous city offices, appropriating $19,226.40 for costs related to said upgrades and declaring emergency. First reading.
Item number six, please.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the city to participate in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program for RoadSalt, excuse me, and declaring emergency. First reading.
Ms. Florima.
As stated previously in my report, I would like to set motion to waive the three-read rule.
I have motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mr. Clay. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance accepting and appropriating $10,560 received from the Ohio Attorney General for use toward mandated continuing education training of police officers and declaring emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florima.
Thank you, President Arnold. To accept these funds and to use them in an expedient manner, I request, or actually request motion to waive the three-read rule.
That motion waived, seconded by Mrs. Neal. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Kearney.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Item number eight, please.
First reading of an ordinance accepting up to $50,000 in grant funds from the Ohio Department of Development for use by the Chillicothe Fire Department for a study of emergency operations in the City of Chillicothe and Ross County, authorizing the appropriate city official to sign an agreement accepting said grant, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with a private consulting firm to conduct the emergency dispatching study and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Florima.
Thank you once again, and finally, Mr. President Arnold. In reflecting my report, I would also like to finally request the waiving of the three-
I have a motion to waive the three-read rule, seconded by Mrs. Neal. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay.
Yes.
Florima.
Yes.
Gray.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Tattman? Yes.
And that ordinance has passed. Number nine.
First reading of an ordinance providing for the removal of the traffic light located at the intersection of Hickory and Eighth Streets, authorizing placement of stop signs at the intersection of Hickory and Eighth Streets, making this intersection within the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, a four-way stop. First reading.
And item number 10.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Walter H. Drain Company to update the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe to prepare up to 40 sets of the replacement pages to update the code on the Internet and declaring emergency. First reading.
That concludes our legislation for this evening. Mr. Clay?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
I have motion for executive session, seconded by Mrs. Gray.
Just a minute, he has to state the purpose of the executive session.
To consider the purchase or sale of property for public purposes.
Okay.
That works.
We have motion, seconded by Mrs. Gray. So we are in executive session. Roll call on that. Roll call.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Tattman? Yes.
We are in executive session. Yeah, it's real nice. Okay, we are here, we need a motion to come out of executive session by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Florina. Roll call on that motion, please.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Crowell?
Yes.
Tattman? Yes.
We are now out of executive session. I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Florina, seconded by Mr.
It seems like it was month old.
Clay, roll call on the motion to adjourn.
Clay?
Yes.
Florina?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Kearney?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Patrick?